All right, the Monday, November 28th, 2022 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Mayor?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have any motions? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we accept the agenda with the addition of the proclamation of the 16 days of activism against gender-based violence from the Zonta Group to consent agenda.
Okay. And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
Just to say that it was just a misstep that we didn't get it on in time, but I'm very excited that we can support such a good cause by putting this in our agenda.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
No, Your Honor.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda with the amendment, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on, I have no announcements for this evening, so we're just going to go right to public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when giving public comment. And just as a note to the public, Commissioners' chance to respond, is that the end of the meeting under Commission comments? Do we have anyone for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I recently became an elected member of the Board of Light and Power. So unless I specifically state I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Light and Power, when I stand up here, I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a private citizen. I thought I would make that clear in advance because I don't intend to stop coming here and I don't intend to stop speaking. I wanted to make it a point of record that Marquette had a triumphant opening of a new opportunity to explore and enjoy our lakefront. Thanksgiving Day, there was one picture on Facebook indicating that the two piers that were recently built in the Lower Harbor are now open and people can access them. And so I went down the day after Thanksgiving and found there's a long pier and a short pier, and the first item of business is to get decent names for them. And I'd invite you to have a contest to name them. I'm pretty sure the long pier should be named after Commissioner Stonehouse, but I'll... Anyway, you need better names in long pier than short pier. Second of all, tremendous interest from the public, lots of conversations, lots of interest. But you couldn't see through the viewing window, which was my idea during the work sessions. I brought it up so that people could look down and see the lake underneath. So the second day after Thanksgiving, I went back there with the Windex and regs, and I cleaned up the window, and the fun began because a little dog was running across, and the person with him didn't want to walk on the window, but the little dog was fine with it. A bunch of little kids came through and they saw the window, and they did belly flops to land on the window and look down into the water. And the parents were just amazed and wanted to know where this had come from and why and how. And it was fantastic. And I would say it was fantastic. It was a part of Marquette that has hitherto not been available to too many people, and it was available and it was good. Now, keeping it available during the winter is going to be difficult. They've got little knobs on the window so that people don't slip and fall, so shoveling is going to be a problem. I recommend brooms, things like that. But in the meantime, it's a real deal, and it's a fantastic use of public resources to make the public more interested. However, like with all things that I'm involved with, I looked down, and the first day I was there, I found a bunch of copper wire on the ground that had somehow been left there. And you know how it's easy to say you found it on the ground? Well, I took pictures, and I have to give this to John. There he is. Because if I didn't give it to him, he wouldn't have any evidence to give to the people who left it there. And I'm sure it was an oversight. And I'm sorry, it's a dog bag, but it's empty. I didn't have anything else to pick it up with, and I didn't want to leave copper wire down there because with people doing belly flops onto the window, I didn't want them to pale themselves. But for once, I get to come up in front of the Commission and say, "Good job, good use of public money, and an excellent step forward in making the lakefront more acceptable, more accessible." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. All right, moving on, that brings us to our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Mayor Protem Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Look at us, we're cruising. All right. Next up is item two under new business, which is the used fire truck purchase. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Of course. In the past years, the Fire Department has utilized two 2004 Pierce Aero XT fire trucks in their daily operations. Within the last six months, both trucks have been removed from service due to frame corrosion and cracking issues. The trucks have been included in the Motor Pool Capital Outlay Replacement Schedule and were scheduled to be replaced in the 2023, '24, and 2024, '25 fiscal years. One new truck has been ordered but is at least 12 months out. A used truck was purchased in June to replace the first pumper truck that had failed. Staff recommends buying a second used pumper to minimize the hours put on the aging aerial trucks until the new pumper truck is in service. Purchasing a second used truck will also push the need for the additional new pumper out for another five to seven years. Motor Pool and Fire Department staff have been looking for used trucks online. Staff have found a 2001 Pierce Enforcer pumper paramedic for sale in Miami, Florida. This truck is clean with very low hours and has medical cabinets, extra storage, and is already set for foam. Since it is already being utilized as a paramedic unit, there would be minimum time involved in setting it up for city use. The purchase price of the truck is $48,000. Fiscal effect, there are sufficient funds in the fiscal year 2023 Motor Pool Capital Outlay Budget. Recommendation, approve the purchase of used 2001 Pierce Enforcer from Action Truck and Equipment in Miami, Florida, in the amount not to exceed $48,000. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. And I believe City Manager Kovacs, you had a little bit additional background you wanted to add?
Certainly, and I just wanted to add the fact that this would be our second, and this is a truck that is currently available. We do have to go down and physically inspect it and then would make arrangements to bring the truck back to Marquette as well. And so this gives us the ability to go ahead and either purchase the truck if it is something that is available, and if not, we would not be able to... We would not purchase it, and we would come back before the Commission for another alternative if possible. And I do have just small evidence of the last... The second truck that was recently decommissioned, this is a part from that frame completely off of it. And I think that we had taken a close look at it before, and this is a big chunk of it, so... Definitely needed. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I'm wishing to approve the purchase of a used 2001 Pierce Enforcer from Action Truck and Equipment in Miami, Florida, in the amount of not to exceed $48,000.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
I would only comment, Your Honor, that I think the background laid out in the document we received, the preamble, well makes the case for the truck and for the need for it and the methodology we're using to get over this home.
Commissioner Hanley?
I would just like to say that I really like to see that we are looking at used vehicles to get us through the meantime when we are struggling financially. I do like the fact that this will push out the next purchase of the truck that we just purchased for $800,000 for five to seven years. That makes me feel a lot better about giving us some time. I do like to see... I mean, I did like the white in this truck. I thought it looked pretty snazzy. I like that we're going to have a multitude of colors on our fire department. But no, I think this is a great choice and a good way to save our aerial truck because those are very, very expensive to replace.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you. I just had a couple of questions that I hope the City Manager can answer briefly. So first, just again, can you reiterate the price difference between this vehicle that we're purchasing and what a brand-new version of this would be? Just so folks, maybe at home or in the public, have an idea of the difference there and how much money we're saving. And then secondly, when do we need... When will the Commission need to start planning to replace this vehicle? It says that we need to add a new pumper in five to seven years, but given the timeline for ordering new vehicles and things, when do we expect to have to actually, you know, make some kind of commitment to replacing this vehicle?
So to your first question, the price difference, this is around $48,000, even if there are a couple of modifications that need to be made in order to equip it for our needs. It would still be well below the price of a new truck, which I believe was near about $800,000 the last time we looked, and is scheduled to increase another, I want to say 10, maybe 15%, within the next few months, and then continue to increase as such. This... That is actually still cheaper than the replacement for the aerial truck, which is also being used right now as almost a frontline, you know... I don't want to say frontline pumper because we do have that pumper for that, but used in regular runs, and that is nearing 1.5 million. So when we look at the timeline to replace those or start ordering that, yes, there is a significant lead time of about 24 months for a pumper and close to 36 months for an aerial truck. We will start looking at what our current replacement plan for either of those trucks or both of those trucks will be, but knowing that this truck can start serving another five to seven years, we can potentially look at pushing off ordering a new pumper truck for another few more years versus trying to turn around in the next couple of months and submit an offer for a new truck, pumper truck. We will need to evaluate what our aerial truck looks like as well because those prices are increasing too. And we are... We are really a service provider for our city, yes, but also some of the needs that we have beyond our community, and we are relied on for our ladder truck for mutual aid too, which is a big concern. So making sure we have everything in working order is incredibly important to our taxpayers, to our city, but also what we do for our community as a whole.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the background info there, and I would just add that, you know, our first and foremost responsibility as a local government is ensuring that we have a safe and livable community. Fire service is a critical component of that, not only in the city of Marquette, but also, as you mentioned, in the entire Marquette region. And I think that, you know, when folks maybe question, "Where are my taxpayer dollars going? Why did the city increase my property taxes this year?" This is a big part of the answer, right? We've got a little over $20 million in an annual general fund budget, and a $800,000 to $1.5 million purchase is a significant chunk of that, right? So these are the difficult decisions that we have to make as a city, playing that financial balancing game. But anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have come?
I would just say that when reviewing this, really breaking it down, costs is... Depending on the lifespan of this, we're talking $6,000, $7,000 a year for the fire truck versus, again, $800,000 to $1.5 million for a new fire truck. So that financially makes a lot of sense. I did also want... I don't know if we need a motion for this, but I at least wanted to ask that I know traditional practice with a new fire truck is that it's named after the sitting mayor. I would much rather prefer it, though, if former Mayor Stonehouse, who's been on this Commission for 11 years now, three of them as Protem and one year as mayor, had that honor instead of me a whole two weeks into my tenure. So I don't know, we need a motion, but... Motion to amend, but if not, I guess that would just be my request.
I would seek a Commission direction if it's not meeting the motion.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Can I... Just for context, can I ask, I mean, did we have any plans at this, you know, staff level for what we were thinking about doing for the naming rights for this truck? If not, I mean, I'd be open to the idea, but just curious.
So I believe that the Fire Department had talked about looking at potentially naming some of the trucks after or pieces of equipment after either fallen firefighters, honoring firefighters, or somebody within that business. Eventually, I think that that was the intent in the future of the new trucks going forward.
Mayor Protem Davis?
I would... I think that it'd be a great idea to consider naming something after Commissioner Stonehouse because of his years of service, but I think at this point, we don't have a fire truck. And perhaps, once we know that we have that fire truck for sure, that we have a chance to consider how we want to name the fire trucks going forward.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, thank you for the discussion and the recommendation. It's certainly a very distinct honor. I would not, however, like to pursue that because I have had no particular relationship with the Fire Department. We have had former mayors that were firefighters in their previous life, and I think it was very appropriate then. I think it's extraordinarily appropriate to continue with using the mayor as a name of a fire truck or naming the fire truck for a mayor. As Mayor Smith, for example, would be in that boat. I think that's been a long tradition in Marquette and one that we should consider carefully before we move to something else, though I would have no objection to moving to something else. I'd like some thought to be put into that and presented. But I would like to respectfully decline from this honor, but thank you very much for the good thought behind it.
Thank you for indulging me, everyone. Is there any more discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to the DPW and Utilities Labor Union wages. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
On December 13th, 2021, the City Commission approved a new three-year agreement with the Department of Public Works Utilities Employees Chapter of ASME Local 1852. The agreement included a 2% wage increase for one year, a wage re-opener in 2022 and 2023. The parties have now agreed upon a 2% wage increase for two years, 2022, and with a one-time $625 payment to each bargaining unit member. The city's bargaining team commends the DPW and Utilities Unit of ASME for their willingness to work with us to negotiate a wage increase that is fair to the employees and the city. Fiscal effect, a 2% increase to wages in addition to a one-time $625 payment to each bargaining unit member equates to a cost of roughly $83,000. This will require a budget amendment. Recommendation, approve the Department of Public Works and Utilities Employees 2% wage increase effective November 28th, 2022, with a one-time payment to each bargaining unit member of $625. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I approve... I move that we approve the Department of Public Works and Utilities Employees 2% wage increase effective November 8th, 2022, with a one-time payment to each bargaining unit member of $625.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion, Commissioner Bonzal?
I just want to say that I really appreciate our ASME bargaining unit for our DPW and Utilities Employees, you know, being willing to come to an agreement with the city on this wage increase. I know that there were a lot of discussions that took place and hard work and negotiations on both sides. I truly believe that at this time, that this is the absolute best that the city could do, given the fiscal constraints that we are facing. And I just want to commend city staff and every single person in that union for coming to an equitable compromise. I also just want to say that, you know, we absolutely need to make sure that, not only within DPW but with all of our staff, but, you know, especially these are the folks... They're the ones really who are maintaining kind of the roots or the bones of our city, right? When you turn on your faucet at home, when you drive to work, right? You... Whether you're, you know, driving on a new road that's been repaved or you're driving on a road the day after a big snowstorm that's safe for you and maybe your children or your spouse to drive with you on, it's because of the work that these folks put in for our community. They work incredibly hard. They work very challenging hours and have a really difficult task to constantly stay on top of this kind of... Sort of often kind of aging, creaking, you know, massive city infrastructure that we have, maintaining it, making sure that it works. And I just think that we all owe them a great debt of gratitude that certainly, you know, goes beyond this wage agreement. But as I stated, you know, I think that we... Because of all the hard work they do, we did the absolute best that we could at this time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
I don't think I could say anything better than Commissioner Bonzal just did, so I will just stop there.
Any other comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Moving on now to our second public comment of the evening. As a reminder, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your physical address when giving public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? Once, twice. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Moving on for comments from the Commission. We're going to kind of keep the rotation system we had going here under Mayor Smith, and just to start us off, now that we're kind of in our relative seats, I'm just going to start on that end with Commissioner Stonehouse.
Me?
Commissioner, comment?
Well, I'd be happy to comment. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Couple of quick things. As I think our public speaker motion, the piers are open, and everybody really has to take a good look at those. As much as we're out there in the middle of winter now, especially with the light displaying, the laser displayed against the ORDOC, it really is a special place. And it certainly is going to become more special, I think, as we move on. It's also a pleasure to note in today's mining journal that the Superior Watershed Partnership received a real accolade from the state of Michigan, and that was the Governor's Award for social... I think technically was referred to as the Governor's Community Service Award that has been given out statewide since 1994, both Republican and Democrat governors involved in the process. And it really speaks very loudly, I think, to this wonderful institution we have in our midst, again, the Watershed Partnership, all of the good work they do, not only directly for us in terms of environmental issues and activities, but also the way they stepped up during COVID and really took on a lot of community responsibilities that were unfortunately being dropped as folks were going into isolation because of that pandemic. So they are an incredible community resource, and it's a real pleasure to see how well they have been recognized by the state. And if you see anybody that's involved with the organization, I think we just take a minute and tell them thanks for what they do for us all. Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I have no comment this evening. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Davis?
I have a few things. One is, I would like to also thank the city staff and all of those in the collective bargaining unit for their work on negotiating our contract that we approved tonight. Sometimes these can be very difficult discussions, and when you finally come to the negotiations and understand one another, it's a difficult process, and I... and understand one another, it's a difficult process and I really appreciate the work that's gone into it. Thank you, Ms. Brum, for talking about the piers. This is a project I was not in favor of when it started because I really liked the ruggedness of seeing all the pilings there. But when I stepped out onto those piers, it was just really an awesome experience and you can even more see the piling. So everyone will find something different and wonderful about stepping out onto those piers, whether it's the glass place where you can see underneath or whether you see the more pilings or whether you can see the laser light show, whatever it is. And if you haven't been there, you will be very pleasantly surprised. The other thing I want to mention about this is that not, people may have forgotten about that, but this was part of the brownfield. This was not something that this, am I correct? Yep, so this is not money that we took out of our city budget, but something that came as the public benefit of the founders landing brownfield, so I want to acknowledge that. I also noticed the Superior Watership Partnership in the paper today and that I just want to congratulate them because they are such a significant part of our community and their work goes beyond our community, but we are so grateful to have them here and doing what they are doing for the Marquette community. And just finally, it's Christmas season, if you can, if you're shopping, so is able to do this shop locally and support our small businesses.
Commissioner Hanley?
I would like to use my time to read the proclamation that was added today. The proclamation is 16 days of activism against gender-based violence. Whereas the city of Marquette is a welcoming community, an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas the city of Marquette is a community which holds the view that all its citizens should be treated with respect and dignity. And whereas the city of Marquette recognizes that all forms of violence are unacceptable and damaging to a healthy community. And whereas the city of Marquette further recognizes that violence against women and girls is one of the most pervasive human rights violations locally, nationally, and globally. It takes place at home, in the workplace, and in open spaces and includes psychological, physical, and sexual violence that has resulted in such events as murder, rape, child marriage, and human trafficking. And whereas it is imperative that women and girls in their own spaces and within their relationships in this community feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas the city of Marquette understands that violence against women and girls threatens a healthy functioning city, inhibits economic progress, and it prevents women from contributing to their own community and creating better lives for themselves and their families. And now therefore, the mayor and city commission of the city of Marquette hurrah proclaims and recognizes November 25th through December 10th as a period of 16 days of activism against gender-based violence for all citizens of Marquette and that they be called to action to prevent all forms of domestic violence through reporting, supporting victims, and supporting community agencies that are working to address these issues dated this 29th day of November 2022. Thank you.
Commissioner Bonsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Hanley, for highlighting that proclamation that we included in the consent agenda today. I also just want to first encourage folks who might want to sit up here with the six of us for the next couple of years, serving their community. I promise, it's more fun than it looks most of the time. I would really encourage you to go onto the city website and fill out an application to serve on this commission. The six of us will be filling a vacancy on the commission in the coming weeks and it's going to be critically important that we make an excellent choice to represent our community and fill the big shoes that former commissioner, now state representative-elect Jen Hill has left in her place. So I would strongly encourage folks to apply for that vacancy. If that feels like too big of a commitment, first, I would just say that you don't need a bunch of prior experience with local government to serve on the city commission and to serve effectively on the commission. We do have, we've had several commissioners in recent years who had no previous local government experience when they ran for the city commission and were very effective commissioners. Secondly, if you really just can't be talked into applying for this vacancy on the city commission, there are over 30 vacancies, the last I checked, on appointed city volunteer boards and committees. So again, you can go to the city website and find those vacancies and apply for them. And at this point, I mean, I think you're functionally would just be signing up for a position on a board or committee because we always need more people to fill the well over 100 seats on these volunteer boards and committees that really make our city work and make sure that the people's voice and the residents' voice is heard in decisions that are made by the city of Marquette. So that's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two quick things I want to mention. First is just, again, going to remind everyone that we are undergoing our master planning process right now. And if anyone wants to, I encourage everyone really to go to marquettemasterplan.org or it's one of the first tabs on the main page of the city's website as well, and just sign up. You'll see, you know, email notifications for updates, if there's surveys you can take to give your opinion and your feedback, events going on, all this stuff kind of falls into this whole process. It's a great way to stay involved and stay informed throughout the whole process and I encourage everyone to sign up. Second thing I wanted to just talk briefly about was our DPW labor agreement contract that we approved here tonight. I just wanted to, really, I mean, Commissioner Bonsel really hit it well, I think, the fact that just almost every part of your day-to-day city life, this team has a tremendous impact on our lives that I think a lot of it goes unappreciated to the, as much as it should be, and it's, they don't receive as much praise and thanks as they should. So I want to thank them and I want to thank our bargaining team for working with them to find a compromise that could still work for our budget while still trying to show them our appreciation. So, thank you. I'm going to leave it at that for the evening and I'm going to kick it over to our city manager, Karen Kovacs.
I think you guys have covered it. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we are now adjourned at 6:33 PM.